Can we call the meeting to order and have roll call starting with Bob Wyatt?
Bob Wyatt.
Paula Rixtrow.
Vicki McKenney.
Vicki Austin.
Kimberly McMichael.
Philip Mutler.
Brent Hoss.
The next board meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, November 20, 2024. The meeting begins at 10 o'clock a.m. at Central Administration offices located at 511 Harrington Highway, Eden, North Carolina. There's no work session scheduled for November. Access the latest agendas from the Rockingham County Board of Education by following these steps. Click on Meetings. Select the date of the meeting you're interested in and choose View the Agenda. Can we have an approval of the agenda today? A motion?
Madam Chair, may I have your approval of the agenda?
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I make the motion to approve the consent agenda.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We'll move right along to the first action item, Low-Performing School Improvement Plans. Dr. Perkins.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Board members. Dr. Stover, I've come to you today seeking your approval of our STICS Low-Performing Schools School Improvement Plans as designated by the Department of Public Construction. Monroton, Mall Street, Williamsburg, Holmes Middle, Reddell Middle and Reddell High School, we designated as low performing. And as a result, they have 30 days since that designation to get their school improvement plans approved by the board and then submitted to the department for further review. So we, I'd like to show you a couple of things that have been new for us this year. We've been using SE-Star for quite a while, but this year DPI recommended that schools consider going to just adopt the State Board of Education goals. So each school has an Our Direction report. And this, I pulled up Monroton's here to give you just a quick overview. It has a place for their vision and mission statements and their goals. You can see the goals are all the same for the schools. Goal one is eliminate opportunity gaps by 2027. Goal two is improve school and district performance by 2027. And goal three is increase educator preparedness to meet the needs of every student by 2027. So all three of those goals are the State Board goals. And now the indicators that the schools work on are all the same. And six of those indicators, we have been working on in the past as well. So under the comprehensive report, this is where the meat of the plan is. This is where the schools dig into those three State Board goals and those six indicators and create action steps to guide their work. So just wanted to give you that quick overview. Be glad to answer any questions that you may have, but we do seek your approval of the plans.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Dr. Perkins.
Yes, ma'am.
How often is the school improvement plan, this type of plan? How often is it reviewed by the school improvement team there at the school? And then do you have somebody here at central office that oversees that to make sure they're meeting the goals they have set?
Yes, ma'am. So the school meets twice a month and they go in, and I'll show you an example. They will go in, like under this here, this is indicator G101, eliminating opportunity gaps. They will go into their action steps. You see where it says 9/20/24?
I can't see it, but I take your word for it.
They click on that and there's a box that pops up where they have to give an update of how they're making progress on that. And then they date that and then they list who's doing that work. You know, if it's been a workshop or if it's been, you know, something that needed to be accomplished, they document that there. And then, and that's a running record of that work. So the school's doing that twice a month. The CNI team, every Monday picks a different zone. So we have four zones and we review their school improvement plans each week. So over the course of each month, every school is being reviewed from us. And then DPI also has a team specifically for the low performing schools that they review the plans and give a feedback as well.
Okay. Now, how long do they have to complete this plan?
So this plan is ongoing. So it's designed, as you know from being a principal, plans are designed to be updated and worked on and changed based on outcomes that they're seeing in the schools. So it's really a live and breathing document that gets updated quite often. But the goals are now through 2027. So that's what, and that's the alignment with the State Board goals.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Rixtrow?
Yeah, I just have a couple of questions. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Do we have all of our teaching, advanced teaching roles still at this time?
Well, Reddell High School is still.
Still working. Okay. And so when, when will, you know, normally the EOGs sometimes get normed, re-normed. When do we expect that to happen again?
That happens when they realign the state standards. So ELA will be a couple of years, math maybe three years before they update the standards.
Okay. And because they've just updated the science ones, right? So will that impact?
Science is, thank you for saying that. Science is supposed to have a new assessment this year.
Yeah. And so will that impact with those, will that impact their projections, I guess, is what I'm asking.
Typically, when they re-norm the test and have new standards, you typically see a decline in performance across the state. Science, you know, was only grades five eight in biology, so it may not have as big of an impact. We have moved to the NC check-in model 2.0, which is supposed to better align with future assessments. So we've been doing that for a couple of years now. So maybe our district won't see as big of a decline when the new standards come out. But obviously, once those results come out, we'll have to readjust and, you know, if we need to have that as a focus, that's definitely one thing that the schools will work on.
I'll be anxious to see how the changes that Reddell Middle School has implemented, especially with the shorter time classes. I think, well, I'm anxious to see what that's gonna, how the impact's gonna be on that school. I'm excited about the work they're doing.
Any other questions? No questions. Do we have a motion to approve the school improvement plans?
Madam Chair, may I have your approval of the school improvement plans as presented?
Thank you. Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Corcoran and Ms. Jumper?
Madam Chair, Board members, and Dr. Stover. Ms. Jumper and I are here today with this memo, just asking for an increase. As you know, we came before the board, just in the last month or two, to ask about the extended day services. And at that time, I think there was an overall feeling that there could be a $50 charge. But I think, and I'll let Ms. Jumper kind of explain why they asked for the increase, but did want to come. We have not started the extended day services yet, as we did want to secure the board's approval before doing so. So I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Jumper.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Board members. Dr. Stover, we are standing here today to ask for your approval to extend the cost for extended day from $50 to $75. The reason being is the current charge, we had already had some conversations with staff member at Department of Social Services who was over the subsidies, and she was saying that we were coming in low. And she kind of advised us, but we were kind of waiting to see. But after figuring everything up and then not having as many children interested as previously thought, and also looking at the cost of actually having the program to be self-sustaining, we looked at having, you know, to take it up to $75. We had a meeting with Leah Ward, who is over the before and after school program for Rockingham County Schools, and she's charging 60. She let us know she was charging 60. The difference between her program and our program is our children are younger and the ratios are lower. So we have to increase our fee in order to, for the program to be self-sustaining, because the Head Start funds that we have now for operational budget would not cover the extended day, because this is in addition to. So we had to move that up to $75. So that's what we're asking approval for, that $75 weekly fee.
Any questions?
I do have a question. Ms. Jumper?
Yes.
Do you all plan to monitor it to be sure that the fees are covering everything that you needed to cover? And will you bring it back?
Yes.
I guess what I want to make sure is, is that we're not going in the hole.
Yes, yes. And so, like I said, we've been talking with finance and, you know, meeting with people and we, a lot has come about, you know, things that, you know, we take into consideration, don't forget about this, don't forget about that. And then also with the current, how we wanted to configure it with the employees, like our current subs would oversee that, so we wouldn't have to hire anybody new and train anybody new. So with all of that came new information, and so that led us to one of the other reasons that we have to move it to $75. But it is a pilot and, you know, a lot of things that come out, we're looking at it, we're monitoring it, and we're seeing exactly, you know, if this is gonna be something that we can do that's feasible.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes, ma'am. You said you had, you didn't have as many students sign up as you thought. How many students did you have sign up?
So at first, we had 12. We were gonna only open it 15, 12 to 15 students, because we didn't want a lot by being a pilot program. So we set about 12 to 15. But then, because some of the parents needed like probably a second shift kind of hours, we couldn't do that. We wanted to keep it as the extended day. With extended day, according to Sally Allen, our licensing consultant, if we keep it at a certain point, it's considered extended day. So we don't have to do anything extra as far as getting another room license, anything. We're just running off of the current license that we already have. So that's why we have to keep the hours where they are. So for that reason, a couple of them just said, you know, I need later hours. And then we had, I think, two parents that actually moved out of the area because of personal situations that actually moved. So right now, we're looking at nine to start with. We've had some inquiry, but actually, we have nine who have actually applied and we're waiting for the subsidies. They have applied for subsidies and we're waiting for approval from subsidies.
And you don't, do you foresee losing any students by increasing it?
I do not. No, sir. And there, and like I said, there are some who are asking about it and inquiring about it. So we have several parents that actually asked about it, inquired about it, but haven't made like actual, turned in the application yet. But we know we're gonna be starting off with nine.
And does DSS pay the 75 that they qualify for?
Yes. Actually, they'll pay, the running charge, I think is like 131 a week. That's what they're recommending for our star rating. So that's why we're much lower than what we could ask for. And so, but knowing our community, we know that our parents can't afford that. But that's why we're asking the parents to please apply for subsidies, because we know we're gonna get that amount. And that's going to help us to be self-sufficient and actually carry all of the cost of the program.
And just to make sure, because I want to make sure the board understands too, that just because they have their rate at 131, they will only pay what we typically charge, what we charge. So they will only pay the 75. They won't pay the 131.
Right. Yes.
So we're asking this afternoon for your approval.
Okay. I think this is a wonderful service for parents that are working, that have the extended day. I think that is great. Any other discussion? Do we have a motion to approve the increase in funds?
I make the motion to approve the increase of the funds.
Can we have a second?
I'll second. You go ahead.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
And I'd like to just let the board know that in November, the childcare program for the after-school program will be coming back to the board with a yearly update of where we are and whether or not the increases that you gave us last fall have, you know, obviously shown to be the right call in terms of the fees and how much money we're making to cover our staff. So we'll be bringing that to you in November.
Thank you so much. Okay, so we'll move on to our reports. Elizabeth Covell. Do we want to go on, Lissy?
We can move on and then come back to her.
Okay. Dr. Stover? Meeting schedule?
Good afternoon, Board members, Madam Chair. We have for you a draft meeting schedule for the calendar, next calendar year of 2025. This is just a discussion item, so no action is needed at this time. We want to present it to you, get some feedback and make adjustments, which we will bring to you, the revised after the feedback and the adjustments for a vote next meeting. Nothing has really changed. We're going into the same schedule that we have of board meetings. The one thing I would note is on the work sessions, note the new time, 1:00 p.m. Since we're, we have gotten feedback that most of the board members would like the sessions here, after 1:00, that saves us a little money for not providing lunches and things like that. And then we also have a couple of meetings that we know have always come up, which are the June meeting to do the budget amendments for the end of the fiscal year. And then another meeting, because of the meeting schedule in July, for just routine personnel approvals. So we already have those on the calendars, so we won't have to go back and, hard for me to say, apparently, ask you to revise. Any feedback or questions at this time?
Yes, Ms. Jumper?
I had a comment. I see in the memo that this will be come back to the board for approval in November or December. It would be my recommendation to wait until a new board is voting on it. So I would recommend December rather than, there's no need in me voting on it, I'm not gonna be on the board.
Right.
We can certainly wait.
But you are a board member until December.
Yeah.
Well, but I'm talking about, I'll be a board member for what, three minutes? And just, yeah.
I think that's a good.
Oh, that's right.
I think that's a good.
I'll be off for any approvals.
So you don't want to vote on the calendar?
Wait down until December?
I think that's a good.
I think that's a good.
So if you have any comments, please, you know, look at your calendars, make sure, I know some of us have some limitations. We're gonna try to see always, as we know with the November board meeting, that runs into the state, the North County School Boards Association annual meeting. And we hope we've covered it this time, but we'll see. We might have to do an adjustment there, but that's over a year away. So that's it. Thank you.
I think that calendar is out. I'll try.
Yeah. And we can, I think, may not try to look online and see if we find it. Yeah, I think we might be clear of it.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Covell?
Here we go. And I will get her set up.
Hi, thank you for having me. I'm gonna talk a little bit today about the digital accessibility. This is a new law and we are required to be in compliance with this. So I'm just gonna take you real quickly, briefly through the presentation. There's a lot of links on there that you can explore on your own. But the real reason why we have to be compliant is for, mostly for people with disabilities. But also, what we found is, is that even though we're doing it for people with disabilities, there are a lot of benefits for everybody. An example of this, you may have a temporary disability. If you're deaf, you have a permanent disability. But let's say you have a middle ear infection. That may be just a temporary thing for you. And sometimes disabilities happen because of just being out in the environment. So if you have a busy coffee shop or something, you might need to use closed captions to be able to see and hear what's going on with a video. Great example of this is a curb cut. How many of you've ever used a curb cut before? They're designed for people with wheelchairs, but people use them all the time, rolling your suitcases, maybe somebody with a baby carriage, something like that. So there are some related laws to this. Mostly, this comes from the Individual with Disabilities Act, but the Americans with Disability Act, ADA Title II, this is a new, this is a rule that basically they're enforcing now. And there are certain compliance dates. And this is effective for us, at least, April 24 of 2026. Now, the reason why we're doing this is because we have been, of course, this law, but also just being able to look at websites in general. Web Aim Million did an actual study on websites. And this was done in February of 2024. Now, we've been doing ADA compliance for a really long time. We've been using websites that are ADA compliant for a very long time, but what they're finding is, is it's not quite there yet. They're averaging about 56.8 errors per page. And these are big websites. These aren't little ones, these are big ones that they're looking at. Now, some of the common things that we are looking at are missing alt text, low contrast text, ambiguous link text, and improper heading structure. So what do those things mean? Well, and I'll come back to this Office of Civil Rights, because we have to be, we have to have OCR letters and agreements to say basically, we're gonna do these things and this is our plan for it. Now, the reasons why we want to have accessibility, there's four things in the framework that we're looking at. Whether or not that's perceivable things, whether or not somebody can roll over an image and know what that image is. Operable navigating within the website, are there distinct links? Are they gonna be able to tell that when they click on your email, that it's taken them to your email and not somewhere else? Whether or not it's understandable, we want to make sure that we're very clear. We use acronyms in education all the time, but not everybody knows what those acronyms mean. And sometimes acronyms can have different meanings. And we want it to be robust. We want to be able to have anybody who comes to our websites to be very accessible for them, so that they know what's going on. Now, I'm gonna give you just a quick few examples of what this means. Alternative text with images is a big one. This is one of the ones we're focusing on with our website. That means that when we put a picture on our website, that we're making sure that that picture's very clear for anybody who sees it or reads it or whatever. That means that if I put a picture of Rockingham County schools, maybe one of our schools, like Dillard Elementary, we want it to say Dillard Elementary. We don't want to sit there and say this is a decorative image, because it's not. It's conveying meaning. This is what this school is. And we want to avoid things like putting charts that have been snipped, like a screenshot of something like a chart, because screen readers cannot read those, because they come across as an image, not actually what content is in the chart. So this is an example of one of this. This is just a clipped picture that somebody stuck on the website. And if you're a screen, if you're using a screen reader, it reads it like an image. It just says that, hey, this is an image. It doesn't say what's in it. The other thing we have to keep in mind is that sometimes people have visual disabilities in which they can't see contrast very well. Think about maybe somebody you know that maybe is colorblind. They may see a variety shades of gray. And if we're trying to convene meaning, like we often do with like, let's say, our data charts where it shows green, yellow, and red, if somebody with this disability sees it, they might not be able to distinguish between the colors. So it's real important for us, when those colors are shown, that we put something with it. Either text of what this means or a number, if it's like, say, a graph. So the things that we're trying to do are things like making sure that our videos have closed captioning, because if somebody who cannot see has to watch that video, they need to be able to understand what's being said in it. There are some limited exceptions for this rule, some things like archived web content. We're not gonna have to worry about going backwards. We're just gonna have to worry about what we have on our websites going forward. And some of these things include things like if, let's say it's a password-protected document, like a personal document, we don't have to provide any type of accessibility for that. So there are some exceptions to the rules that they're putting in. So just to give you a brief overview of some of the things we've started, our new webpage, it was designed around being ADA compliant. So much of the stuff on there is ADA compliant, as long as we're doing it the right way. We've trained our new webmasters on what that means. We are meeting with an OCR lawyer, just to make sure that we're doing everything within our compliance. We are attending professional development. There is professional development that is being provided by the state of North Carolina that I am attending at this time. This is learning more and more about what we need to be ADA compliant. And we've also established our district contact. That happens to be me. So I will get a lot of the state information coming in on that. Now, there are some things that we still need to do. Like I said, our compliance deadline is in April 24 of 2026. That's next school year. So we're coming fast. But some things that we have done, we've already put in place. Example four, we've asked for webmasters to be sure they have that alt text. We've tried to work on descriptive links. So like I said, if somebody's trying to email you, we want it to be explicit. We don't want to say, "Email Vicki Austin here." What we want them to say is, "This is Vicki Austin's email. It's gonna open in another page for you, so that you can email her." And we want to be sure that we're using very clear language, simple language that everybody can understand on our websites. Now, there's still stuff to do. We're running our website through special, basically, it's an online program that anybody can access. I've been using Sally recently. It's the one where you can just open a website in it and it'll tell you where all your errors are. And I'm doing that so that I can go through and make sure that we're complying as we possibly can be. But there's also some other things to do. We're gonna have to train staff on some other things, like how we build our documents. How many of you have ever created a document where you wanted a header or a title on it and you basically made that title and then you clicked, "I want this to be like bigger text and I want the text to be blue." Well, if you're not doing that in the right way by using headers and actual, putting a color that's easily distinguishable on that, then the documents that you're creating are actually not ADA compliant. So we want to do some training for that, little by little. And we really want to start with the top down. We want things that are coming out of our district office to be compliant, so by the time they hit the schools, they're good for staff. So a lot of that includes just providing the text instead of a flyer. So simple things. All right. Do you have any questions for me? I know that's a lot.
That is a lot of information, but thank you.
Yes. And there's lots of resources, like I said, on the presentation, that you can go in a little deeper if you'd like to. But I feel like we're doing pretty good at getting this ball rolling. Okay.
Thank you so much.
You're very welcome.
We appreciate it. Dr. Corcoran and Ms. Jumper? Head Start Performance Standards.
So good afternoon again. Ms. Jumper and I are here to go through our yearly report to the board about the performance standards. This is considered your training. And so we know that there are many other things within the performance standards that the board would need to look at, but this is a nice overview of what that training involves. And so I'm just gonna walk us through a couple of these, just so you can, and then Ms. Jumper will take us home with it all. But as you know, we have governance between our Policy Council, our Board of Education, and our Head Start office, Office of Head Start. And so we are governed by the decision-making of those three entities. And so with that governing body, they assume, and this board particularly assumes, all of the legal and fiscal aspects of running the Head Start program. While Policy Council certainly does play a part when it comes to the, what is considered the governing body, the Board of Education is our governing body. And as such, you approve all of our financial management, you look at all of our new financial expenditures, you approve our annual budget, and monitor the agency's actions and auditing As our governing body too, you can hire or help to hire and terminate, if necessary, our Head Start Director and other members of our management staff, provide leadership, focus on the self-assessment, develop the plan. And as you know, every five years, we come to you again to talk with you about, you know, submitting our application to the Office of Head Start for the five consecutive years after, to run our Head Start program, and then to provide us with legal oversight, if necessary. and then to provide us with legal oversight if necessary. And Ms. Jumper, if you'd like to jump in there without the Policy Council? I'll try. I'll move this way so that you can, and I'll run this for you so that you don't have to do anything except that.
Okay, so like Dr. Corcoran said, there are the governing body, then there's a Policy Council. We have monthly Policy Council meetings. But the Policy Council establishes and maintains responsibility for the direction of the Head Start program. The Policy Council shall be, must be, composed of parents of children who are currently enrolled, which is 51%, members of the community. Our Policy Council also resumes responsibility for Head Start program budget planning and program recruitment and much more. So we bring all of the things that we need approved to them first and then it comes to you for the second approval and final approval. For determining varying and documenting eligibility for our Head Start program, the age requirements, children must be three years old or turn three by the time, by the date of use to determine eligibility in the school system. Children are eligible for the program if their family's income is equal to or below the poverty line. Family is eligible for, or in the absence of childcare, will be potentially eligible for public assistance, including TANF, SSI, and SNAP, if the child is homeless or if the child is in foster care. So our Rockingham County Schools Head Start program, we are the grantee, Rockingham County Schools is the grantee. The 24-25 budget is $2,039,000. The number of approved slots, we have 198 approved slots. We have 11 classrooms. We have 41 staff members. We have 31 NC pre-K slots. Our non-federal share amount is 500,000. Number currently enrolled is 198. The number of Head Start sites is seven. And the number of teachers, we have 11 teachers, 11 teacher assistants. Our total amount from NC pre-K reimbursement slots come up to $130,000. So that makes up our non-federal share. Okay? The Head Start stipulates that the federal share of the government, from the government, cannot exceed 80% of the total budget to operate the program. So that's where our $500,000 come in. We have to make sure that we come up with that amount through in-con services, donations, NC pre-K, the NC pre-K allotment. So that's how we come up with the other 20%, which is the $500,000. So ways that we generate non-federal in-con, this is a list of them, specialized instructional services, the support from Dr. Corcoran, finance, HR. Also, facility uses of the classroom, parent volunteers, maintenance, when maintenance provide all of our repairs, the Policy Council members, parent volunteers, classroom interns, Cheshire, Rockingham County Dental Services, and then, like I said, the NC pre-K reimbursements. And these are just some links for the history of the Head Start program and, you know, all of the advantages of Head Start and why we do what we do.
Do you have any questions?
Any questions?
I have two.
Okay.
What is the poverty number? What is that number? Do you know it?
I do not know that. I'm sorry. I can get back with you. But I do not have the information right now. My Family Services, it's a federal document and it comes out every year. And they wait until, I think I want to say December or January when it comes out. And that's what we go by. But is the federal poverty guidelines, is not just something for Head Start, but is for the federal?
Forty thousand, I mean.
I think it's about that, to be honest. I think the last time that we got that information, but I don't know that off the top of my head.
And how many homeless? Do we have any homeless?
Right now, we have 14 homeless families.
We have 14 homeless?
And it's doubled from last year. Last year, I think we had like seven, and now we have 14. And so we, every year, we reserve slots for homeless because they are, if someone called us and said that they're homeless, we don't look at anything else. We automatically take them in. If someone calls in and said they have a foster child, we look at nothing else. We take them in. So we have slots reserved for that. But we know our homeless population has doubled since last year.
That's almost 7%.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Thank you so much. Dr. Corcoran, absenteeism?
I brought my passwords up here because I wanted to show you something. And if I can manage all of this, I will. So let me come out of this. Wanted to kind of help the board know where we are with managing and really supporting our principals and other staff members in understanding our chronic absenteeism. So this was a presentation that I did for our principals at our last board meet, or last principal's meeting. And I just wanted to share with the board kind of what we did and sort of how and why we're going in this direction. As you guys know, this is part of our strategic plan. Certainly something that as a board and as a school district in the last year, we've really focused a lot on. I think I shared with you that we were at 91.5% with our attendance last year. Not something that is just a Rockingham County School District issue, but across the country, as we know, for the last several years after COVID, attendance really did take the dive in our schools, in our school system. And so one of the reasons that we kind of tried to make sure that our principals understand the why, and they know the why. I don't really have to explain that to them. But, you know, they are, they are the ones that are boots on the grounds dealing with students who are not coming to school. And we know that our social workers and our school nurses and school behavioral health specialists from last year, all were focusing a lot on that. And so we really try to talk about what's the difference between truancy and what's chronic absenteeism. As you know, we've talked about it a lot. But if a student misses more than two days every month of their school year, they would have missed 18 days. And that is considered, anything beyond that is considered chronic absenteeism in that terminology. Truancy really is, we're looking at those unexcused absences. So students may miss school and they may have a very valid reason why they're not at school. They may have had the flu. They may have, you know, been sick. Certainly, we excuse those, but we're talking about, when we talk about truancy, we talk about the issues that we run into when students are just not in school. And we can't figure out the why of why they're not there. But I wanted to show you this because this is really so true. This is a ripple effect. This is what happens when one student isn't at school. What happens there is that ripple effect, as you've heard before, like that dripping water in the faucet and then what it looks like in the sink and then what your bill looks like at the end of the month. So when we think about students not coming to school, when they don't come to school, then the teacher is missing that student. But more importantly, their peers are also missing them. If there's group work, if there's activities, if there's work for them to do. And so, you know, it takes everybody really to make chronic absenteeism something that we focus on. And then this, to me, is all about instructional support services. Like I, I think about this, I look at this and I think, this is all about what our department focuses on because we talk about that fiscal and emotional health and safety. We talk about that a lot through our Student Health Advisory Council. We talk about adult and well-being and emotional competence, like how are our staff doing so that they can do their jobs very well? We talk about our students' belonging and their connections. We talk about academic. We work very closely with the CNI department because if a student doesn't, isn't getting what they need socially and emotionally, it's likely they're not going to do as well academically. So we're constantly working with them. And then we kind of look at that in the middle and that is that excellent care and support that we talk about in our strategic plan. So such a, such a nice segue there. Root calls us. We talk a lot about what are some barriers. Our principals can tell you what those barriers are. I don't think I need to read all of this. But just to say that there is a document there that I was able to share with them, that I wanted them, if they wanted to use this, they certainly could. What we have created for them is a folder of tools in their toolbox, so to speak. Resources, links, activities that they can use in their building if they so choose. I'm sorry, I clicked right out of that. Let me get back down here. So I say that to say, they're working with their school improvement teams. So we talk about quantitative data. What you've got from the CNI department, when they start talking about data, is quantitative data. That is numbers, that is hard data. Qualitative data is the stories. Qualitative data is what makes the story, what makes the data come alive. Because if you can tell the story behind the why, what's happening, that is where the true information comes. So we've talked to them about some tools that we gave them. For example, I loved this one. Two-by-ten relationship and trust building. Pick one student, talk to that student for two minutes for 10 consecutive days. Making a real connection with that. Doesn't take much longer than that. Kids don't want you to spend 25 minutes in the hallway talking to them. They just want you to acknowledge that they are there. They want you to ask a few questions about them. They want to know that you care about them, right? And so that was one, talking about maybe some student focus groups. Again, these were things that we offered to our principals as ideas and suggestions. The next one is our multi-tiered systems of support. As you know, everything we're doing with our SEB teams and our CASA is all around this notion of MTSS and really what interventions and strategies we're providing for our students. So this was just an example. If you were to look across the top, what would family engagement, positive student engagement, behavioral mental health, physical health, academic support, extended learning, and basic needs look like? And so what we talked about was, here's an example of what one might look like when it was filled in with some information from the schools. And then we provided them with a blank one so that they could do this. I'm not sure what that happened there, but you see it hopefully. And I'm, again, I'm, gosh, I'm so sorry, you guys. But you see what it looks like. And they got the example of this. So they have a spreadsheet there in their folder and certainly something that they might want to look at. And then we talked about the reason why a student may not be at school, what that possible intervention would look like, and who would be our partners. And, you know, we are only as good as the partners too that we choose to partner with in our school district. So if we're working with DSS, DHHS, if we're working with Health Incorporated, if we're working with Rockingham County Youth Incorporated, like if we're working with any partners at all, how can those partners help us? And so maybe anxiety might be an issue for a student. So what would we do to help that student? And then what possible partners might we have? If they're disengaged, what does that look like? Health, if you look at that link, and I won't go there because I do not want to cross out, out of this again or click out of this again. But I did want to say, if you look here, these are some, this is some information that we do provide and do send these out to our parents. And then finally, what we said was, this is what this looks like. The district wraps its arms around these schools and schools wrap their arms around their students and families about building the capacity. What is some action? What can we do? What's some positive engagement, strategic partnerships that we have with our partners, adequate equitable resources, and share accountability? So I wanted to show something to you and I hope I can, I hope I can get there for you. Great, this did not log out for me. Thank you very much. The one time when I, all morning long, I'm clicking out, but it's not. This is great. This is our dashboard and this is Bethany Elementary School. But if you look on the right-hand side of this, you'll see that the target goal has been set for 91% this year. And so what I picked was 10/24, okay? That was the day that I chose. And what that does is tells you that our district average that day was 90.8. So this is our dashboard. It tells us every day, every single day, our administrators can go into here. They can pull up the day. They can look at the dashboard. They can see that that's the percentage. They can see where we are as a school district. And then the great thing is, they can go down through here and see whether or not they are meeting that goal. Okay? So we have some schools that are not, right? We have some schools that need to do, continue to do some problem solving around their attendance. And I will tell you, I think it is, the biggest struggle is for our high schools, obviously. Our students are more mobile. They're able to leave the building. And so our principals at the high school certainly have a larger task, in my opinion, in trying to keep students in the building and, you know, their attendance. But I can pick another day. Let's see if it'll let me now. It might have, it might click me out because it's been a while since I've been in this. But, okay, there we go. So on this particular day, I went back just one more day. We met that goal. So if 90.0 was 91.0 was the goal, that day was 91.2. So we were over the goal that day. So it just allows those schools to look at their attendance each day if they want to and see where they are comparing to the other schools. Okay, any questions for me? And I'm so sorry, I clicked out of that so many times. Kept going back.
Where is that link at?
It's on Data Mart, in Data Mart.
So we have access?
So our principals, our principals have access.
They have that, okay.
Have that access. So they can go in there every day and look at that. And a lot of our, you know, it depends on who you are, but there could be some other staff members that might have that as well. I'm certain all of our APs have that. Some of our ICs probably have that. And even some of our counselors have access to part of Data Mart. They may not be able to see everything, but there's certain parts and portions of that that they can see.
I just have a comment, if you don't mind. In the last slide that you showed us, it showed all of those supports helping this, you know, being there for the students and families and wrapping their arms, I believe, was the word you used. And then on the, on the slide previous to that, when it talks about aligning the partners and the intervention, we have wonderful partners in our community that are working with us on this. But I really would like to see us add parents to that group of partners. Because yes, we're doing this for the children and the families, but those, those family members, those guardians and those parents, they are a partner with us in making sure that these, our students are in.
You are absolutely correct.
In school, so, thank you.
Anyone else? All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
And I will click out of this now for the final time.
Mr. Rogers?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Stover. This afternoon, I'm presenting a required, as required by the board, a update to our organizational chart for our central services or central office staff. See, it slowly comes up. So I'm just going to go over the chart. And then if you have questions, please feel free to ask them as we go. So of course, the first page has the Board of Education, its members. And then their direct report is Dr. Stover. And then Ms. Brown, of course, works with Dr. Stover in those duties. Then is the senior leadership team. Again, it's led by our superintendent, Dr. Stover. And then the lead of each division, as I call it, their human resources, finance, curriculum instruction, operations and logistics, and student support services. And then it sort of goes down from there. So each division, you'll see, honestly, I started with finance and HR because it was the simplest one. It was the one-pagers. And so I started with those two, got those right, and then I went from there. And so with our finance department, of course, is led by Ms. Ellis. And then has her reports that work in our finance department to support our schools and support our employees, make sure those bills get paid, and then make sure our employees get paid as well that serve our students. And then our human resources department, which I'm fortunate enough to lead. These employees work with our, our staff across the district in, again, hiring or if they are separating with us, working with them through that process. And then also supporting our schools if incidents were to arise and working with them, our leaders with those situations, concerns or questions come up, our staff is available for that. We have a retire, a specialist that focuses on leaves of absences for like medical leaves and then retirement as well. And we have, I have a specialist that's focused on substitutes and hiring and supporting our substitutes as they're out in the field. So various, we get more specialized again as we're inside the department. Operations and logistics, this department, again, looks at our functioning of our, our services here in Rockingham County Schools. So we're talking about our maintenance department that makes sure that our buildings are dry, are warm, or cool, depending on the time of year. are warm, or cool, depending on the time of year, and they're functional and not too breezy as we're walking through the building. Our transportation department makes sure that our students get picked up in the morning, get dropped off, and get transported if they are going on field trips and those types of things, or athletic events. Child nutrition, making sure our students get fed during the school day, before and during the school day. Our technology officer is focused on an apartment that, of course, is growing need for technology in our, or reliance on technology in our schools. He oversees that. Director of Safety and Public Information, getting the communication out and also focused on our schools or the safety in our school buildings, to make sure our students are safe, which is our first charge. I'm going to scroll through these, which I should have been doing as I was talking, but school nutrition, you'll see that, technology, transportation. I will say, just to point out, buses, we have approximately 200 buses in our fleet. Each one of those buses that are, particularly the yellow buses, require 30-day checks. So that's each, and that clock starts, as soon as that last check ends, the clock starts again for that next 30 days. So it's very schedule-oriented or focused to make sure those checks get done. So they are, they are a busy group for sure to make sure those, those school buses are safe on our road. And our maintenance department, we have over 30 buildings in our district that they maintain and make sure that they are safe, dry, and comfortable for students and staff to work and learn in throughout the day. Then we go into our curriculum and instruction division. Various areas, just looking down, we've got the Director of Federal Programs, Director of Secondary Programs and Testing, which that's a, two big hats, Director of Elementary Programs and Title I, again, two big hats to wear, Director of CTE and Innovation, which is very important to our focus, our strategic planning moving forward, and then our Coordinator of Student Data Information, which is very important and well to support these programs. So our elementary programs. And some of these positions are based at schools. They serve, I call district, if they serve multiple schools, that's sort of district in serving multiple schools, and they report to somebody at central office. But lots, many of these positions are based at a school. Secondary testing accountability, excuse me, CTE. That leads us into our instructional support services, which is our EC programs, excuse me, our early learning Head Start and Extended Day Program, and our student support services like counseling, school nurses, school social workers as well. Are there any questions about the organizational chart? I tried to make it very clean. There aren't a lot of duties listed on organizational chart. I'm, I'm from a military background, so you have to forgive me with that. I look at it as an organizational chart as a chain of command. If somebody were to want to elevate a concern, go to the organizational chart, you see who that person reports to. It's very clean in that regard to be able to see that, I feel like, to help support that process in addressing concerns.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
May I ask a question?
You may.
Mr. Rogers, on the curriculum and instruction.
Yes, ma'am.
I noticed that Jason Hyler, of course, he's over the middle and high schools, I think, secondary schools, so that'd be middle school, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. And then it drops down and says principals. Is he over all principals or just principals of the secondary schools?
These secondary, secondary principals, I'm sorry. So on his, I believe that chart you're referring to is probably the one that has Dr. Perkins at the top, that has just principals at the bottom?
Yes, yes.
Yes, ma'am. And so I wanted to include principals on that chart.
Oh, I see what you've done.
Because Dr. Perkins does work with that group.
Yeah.
Principals. But then secondary, I did specifically on his chart illustrate.
Drop down.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions?
Can I have one more thing? The reason we wanted to have principals on there is because we also consider principals to be district leaders as well.
Okay.
And so we thought it was important to include them, and it's all principals. So those three people, Ms. Covell, Mr. Hyler, and Ms. Neely, all support and directly supervise the principal.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Appreciate it. I think we only have one committee report, policy.
Can I ask one question, though?
Sure.
A little bit of relief, sorry.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm just, I love this. This is very, very helpful. In serving on the Finance Committee, I think it would be helpful to have the budget and the, maybe the PRC for these positions, if that's, I mean, if that, that would be helpful, I think, in looking at our budget and being able to identify. Do you guys agree?
We're working on that. We had to get this straight. We're also going to create a document that has everybody's links and phone numbers that's correct, so when, in our website, so people know exactly who to contact. So we wanted to get this right first, and then we're going to move forward. But thank you for that suggestion. We are going to work.
So can I ask one question, please? So one other thing is, you know, a lot of times we hear, even, even our school, even like you'll hear school staff talk about how heavy they feel like central office is, and I think this proves that that's not true, that people wear a lot of different hats. And this might not be something that we necessarily would like to talk about during a board meeting, but I would like to say, like, the number of changes that have occurred in the last five or six years.
Again, that's one of the work I'm going to be working on. Thank you.
We've had that conversation, and that's, that's my next project to work on.
Yeah, and a lot of, thank you for pointing that out. A lot of these are directly supporting schools, like, you know, our maintenance guys directly support the schools, thus, child nutrition, et cetera.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you so much. Ms. Michael, do you want to do the policy?
I will, but I left my glasses at home, so this is going to be short and sweet.
No, I'll let you keep them. Thank you, thanks.
Okay, so this is the Board Committee Report. Again, the goal of the committee is that we strive to interpret both current and recommended revisions by the State Board of Education in order to ensure policies set forth by the Rockingham County Board of Education policy manual are aligned accordingly. A summary of our actions is on September the 9th, 2024, we reviewed and recommended revisions for the following policies. Board Policy 3220, Technology in the Educational Program, Board Policy 7650 and 8620, Employee Travel and Other Expense Reimbursements, Board Policy 8210, which is Grants and Funding for Special Projects, Policy 8340, Insurance, Policy 8510, School Finance Officer, and Regulation 5030-R, which is Community Use of School Facilities. Each policy was discussed in length. The Board Policy Committee discussed Policy 8210, Grants and Funding for Special Projects to ensure that additional language was added. The applications for grants or specially funded projects that obligate the Board to expend more than $75,000 over the life of the award will be in accordance with the approval and the educational goals of the Board. The superintendent will require to report a monthly report for any grant proposals. Each of the policies other than Regulation 5030-R, Community Use of School Facilities, were approved to go forward to the Board for approval in the October Board Meeting. The regulation will go back to the Finance Committee for a final review of the fee schedule. On October 14th, the Committee also met to review the following policies. Policy Code 4331, Assaults and Threats, Regulation 5030-R, the Community Use of School Facilities and Facility Fee Schedule, and the Facility Use Application. Policy Code 1710, 4020, and 7230, Discrimination and Harassment Prohibited by Federal Law. The Committee also reviewed the following policies to ensure that they continue to support, to support the district and to remain relevant. Those policies were 3570, which is Limited English Proficiency Program, Policy 38, 3580, School Drivers, the Driver Education Program, I'm sorry, Policies 3630, School Camps, Policy 3640, Childcare Programs, Policy 4105, Kindergarten Staggered Sessions, Policy 4350, After-School Detention, Policy 5005 and 7720, Employee Political Activities, Policy 7100, Recruitment and Selection of Personnel, Policy 7300, Staff Responsibilities. Policy Code 4331, Assaults and Threats, was tabled for further discussion and will be brought back to the Committee in November. After several revisions and reviews by different committees, the Policy Code 5030, we have talked about that thing forever. Community Use of School Facilities, Facility Fee Schedule, and the Facility Use Application will be presented to the Board of Education in November, hallelujah, as an action item for Board Approval. Each of the local policies had minimal changes, and they will move forward to the Board for approval in November, meeting under the consent agenda for Board Approval.
Thank you, Ms. Michael.
The hallelujah? No, that was my little addition.
And that's our only report today.
I have a finance.
Do you have a finance?
Yeah, I think that's all.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll read that real quick. I think my batteries might be dead, so I'm trying to talk really loud.
Mine won't, too.
Do it. On August 30th, an RFP was issued for banking services for the period of January 1, 2025 through January 30th, 2029. Proposals from First National Bank and Home Trust will receive by the deadline of October 14th. After careful review of each proposal, the Finance Committee met on October 24th to evaluate each proposal and make a recommendation. Our recommendation is to remain with our current bank, First National Bank. This recommendation will be presented to the Board for approval on the consent agenda at the November 20th Board Meeting. As we continue our banking relationship with First National Bank, the Finance Committee will ensure that cash management strategies are used regularly to maximize interest earned. The Finance Committee will review these procedures on a quarterly basis. The next meeting of the Finance Committee will be held on Wednesday, November 13th, at 1:00 p.m. in the upstairs boardroom of the Central Office. The topic of this meeting will be the discussion of federal budgets.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Can we have a motion to go into closed session, Mr. Butler?
Yes, ma'am. I'll make a motion, the Board go into closed session to discuss confidential personal information pursuant to General Statute 143-318.11A, 1 and 6, and to consult with our attorney to protect the attorney-client privilege pursuant to General Statute 143-318.11A, 3.
Thank you. Do you have a second?
I have a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Let's take a 10-minute break.